I'd like to call the order, the City of Littleton City Council Special Meeting for Thursday, August 26, 2021. Time is 6:30 PM or 18:30. City Clerk, roll call please.
Mayor Valdez.
Present.
Mayor Protem Malin.
Here.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Here.
Councilmember Fay.
Here.
Councilmember Grove.
Here.
Councilmember Milliman.
Here.
Councilmember Rudnicki.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, Council, you've had a chance to review the agenda. Any changes? Seeing none, it is approved. We have no citizen comment tonight. We're going to move right into our public comments. The time now is, I open public comments at 6:31. Councilmember Milliman, if you will, please.
Public comment is an opportunity to express opinions or ask questions regarding issues that are not part of public hearings on tonight's agenda. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. The City Council is not authorized under the Colorado Open Meetings Law to discuss, comment, or take action at this meeting on any issue raised by public comment that is not part of tonight's agenda. The mayor may refer the matter to the city manager and/or city attorney for immediate comment after public comment, or to staff to obtain additional information and report back to the council as appropriate. We expect comments to be civil. Disrespectful or disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. Please remember to state your name and address or council district for the record. Please speak directly into the microphone.
Great, thank you very much. All right, I have the list, nobody has signed up. Do we have anybody that would like to speak? Seeing none, it is 6:32, public comments are closed. Great. We'll move into our, we have no consent, yeah, we have no consent agenda items tonight. So we're going to move right into item number eight on our agenda. And Council, how I'd like to conduct this portion of our meeting tonight, where's my notes? I'm going to go ahead and read both ordinances, and then we'll hear from staff, they'll go ahead and give us a presentation that'll be for both ordinances. After that, then we will go into a discussion, Council will go into a discussion, and then we'll move forward with our voting. Each item will be voted on individually. So with that, our first item is Ordinance 21-2021, version two. Ordinance 21-21, an ordinance on second reading submitting to the registered electors of the City of Littleton, Colorado, a ballot issue regarding a three-quarter cent sales and use tax increase to fund capital improvement projects. Our second item, Ordinance 20-2021, an ordinance on second reading submitting to the registered electors of the City of Littleton, Colorado, a ballot issue regarding a half-cent sales and use tax to fund the cost of capital improvements. I think with that, I think we're ready for our staff, if you will, please. City Manager.
All right, thank you Mayor. Good evening, Council, and good evening, public, joining us here in the room and certainly watching us on cable and Facebook Live and whatever other media sources we've got. I think tonight here, we're going to be talking, in my opinion, perhaps about the most important financial decision this city is going to make for probably decades. We've had a conversation ever since I've been here for the past four years about financial sustainability, and that has been a goal of the Council for quite some time. Just going back in time, when we talk about financial sustainability, you'll remember that we took on the big issue of our fire department, and how that was, the cost of that service was just unsustainable, and that it was a significant impact on the general fund. And all the issues that were surrounding that, in the end, we could not financially sustain it. So we went through a substantial effort. The Council directed myself, the staff, to go to the community, explain the problem, and talk about the alternative. In that particular case, it was to have our fire department join South Metro Fire. And that was the opportunity there, at a cost. We increased the mill levies for our residents, our business owners, we did decrease our own property tax, but that was a way for us to gain the service that we needed for fire service, and at the same time, kind of manage ultimately the cost in our general fund. That stabilized us. So when we talk about financial sustainability, that's one action from a few years ago. In fact, a couple of the Council was on that, part of the Council at that point in time. Here we are today, we're looking at the next problem, and it's in our capital project fund. You know, and I recognize that city budgeting and accounting is rather complex and rather confusing, and it's very difficult to communicate to people just how a city is structured and how we're financed. In just general terms, the city is kind of divided into a series of funds. Those funds, in some cases, we're not able to take money or fund balance and move it from one source to another. One example of that is our sewer utility, our sewer fund. The fees and charges that we charge for the sewer utility must stay in the sewer utility, no exceptions. And so that's for all the services, our wastewater treatment plant, the collection, the treatment. In the case of the general fund, this is the majority of where our sales tax goes, that's the operations. This is just what I was talking about earlier. So police, public works, the library, museum, all of that, the operations is in the general fund. We do have the ability to move fund, fund balance from the general fund to other sources. The challenge there is, we just stabilized it. So if we try to move something to take on the problem in the capital project fund, we have to reduce services in those key areas. And so as, over the course of time, we've talked about some different alternatives, the magnitude of the problem, and we spent some time here in February with the City Council, we've been working towards this issue for the last couple of years. We had a discussion about where are we really at? And so we have about a $6.5 million shortfall, we've identified over the last few years, about a $90 million-plus backlog of capital projects. And that's shown on our webpage. We have a list of all those projects, and for which the discussion tonight is centered around that list. Council knows that we spent a lot of time talking about the problem, we tried to define that up front. And as we talked about in February, I think the Council, to your credit, has decided it's time to take this problem on. We cannot, and I'm not overstating this, we must solve this problem. There's too much at risk that we fund out of the capital project fund to ignore this. Not only do we have kind of this accumulation of all sorts of capital issues, we have everything from our fleet to the transportation, big transportation projects like Mineral and Santa Fe, building improvements, whether it's library, museum, this building, all of that is collected in one fund. Decisions were made some years ago to aggregate all that into one place, no doubt it perhaps made sense at that point in time, but now, we're paying a price for that. We only have two major revenue sources that go into the capital project fund, building use tax and the gas tax. And we've been talking about that for several months. We all know through the pandemic here, you know, when people stayed home, the gas tax decreased. And so through the pandemic, just made the problem more acute, and that was the conversation in February. So you directed myself, the rest of staff, to take this issue and to communicate the problem out in our community. And we spent the last several months with a consultant, Sean Walsh, Todd Vitale, to kind of collect information, to do our very best to communicate the problem out to our community. We spent a lot of time at this, and I know that we've had multiple steady sessions, I hope the Council feels that they have the data before them this evening, we certainly have the public hearing this evening. And now we're at a point in time where we accumulated all this information and all this effort into this one evening here to make a decision. Do we advance something onto the ballot and let our citizens make a decision about the future of our community? We're talking about an investment in infrastructure for our community. Our timing, in my opinion, while difficult coming out of a pandemic, is also good when we look at this in comparison to our Congress, the US Congress. Lots of conversation about, you know, $3 trillion budget proposal here to invest in our, our country, our infrastructure. And if that passes, and if our citizens here consider this particular ballot measure, we will be positioned so that we can take advantage of the federal money that will come down through that federal proposal. Typically, this comes through Dr. Cog, kind of a regional approach, a regional discussion, so projects like Broadway, or Santa Fe, or other kinds of major transportation projects, we will see the opportunity, but we have to have a local match. Typically comes at a level of about 20%. Well, today, we don't have the ability to make that match. So while the federal government may be sharing the opportunity with us, this ballot measure is absolutely critical for us to kind of maximize the opportunity, not just with local resources, but to capitalize on the federal resources. So we have a PowerPoint, we shared this here with Council and the community here last week, and we're going to walk through that. Kelly's going to spend some time talking about kind of the public engagement process that we went through, and then we'll talk a little bit more about the half-cent versus the three-quarter, and then ultimately, the decision here for Council, and certainly our public hearing. So with that, Kelly, would you mind starting the PowerPoint?
Thank you, Mark. I'm Kelly Nardi, I'm Director of Cultural and Media Services for the City of Littleton. Thank you, Council, for your time tonight, and citizens, for being here. I want to remind you of some of the prior actions and discussions on this project. On February 2nd, Council affirmed Goal Two, Financial Stability, and created a timeline for a revenue-focused ballot issue for this year. The Research and Engagement Team was created. That team is made up of the city manager, Mark Ralph, myself, our Finance Director, Tiffany Houghton, our Public Works Director, Keith Reister, and Kathleen Osher, who is our Community Services Director. The project got underway March 2nd. You were introduced to our Research and Engagement Team consultants, who are also here tonight to answer any questions you might have. April 6th, Council released a budget proviso for the public opinion research, which we'll talk about in just a moment. May 18th was the first status report on the qualitative research that was done, and the first telephone poll, which was a baseline poll. We held a telephone town hall on June 30th, and on August 3rd, you heard the second status report, the second telephone poll results, and Council gave consensus to the staff to bring forth ordinances for your consideration tonight. The baseline poll, I remind you, was conducted April 22nd to May 2nd. It was of 300 likely Littleton voters. Support for the half-cent sales tax increase, the total was about 54% in favor. The support for the three-quarter cent sales tax increase was about 57% in favor. We posted this question on Open Littleton, we had a remarkable amount of engagement. The numbers are even higher than when this was uploaded. We closed that out yesterday. There were a total of 360 responses, totaling 18 hours of public comment. The retail marijuana tax increase received 69.7% support. I remind you, those who responded to this poll could select more than one option, so it does not total 100%. The lodging tax received 72.8% support. The half-cent sales tax increase received 56% support. The three-quarter cent was 44.3%, and 6.2% of people did not like any of these options. I want to summarize some of the engagement that we've done over the last three and a half to four months. We launched a Funding Fix website, launched May 21st, 1,658 unique visitors, it has a fact sheet, the FAQs, and as Mark mentioned, the 15-year Capital Projects Fund list of projects of about $98 million. The Littleton Report, we had two front-page stories on the print editions, and seven stories in the online edition. Facebook, you can see we had 11 posts. We did a telephone town hall with 334 participants, which equaled about 5,400 minutes of engagement. As you know, we held a State of the City, and presentations were made to the Planning Commission, Arts and Culture Commission, Next Gen Advisory Committee, Transportation Mobility Board, and Historic Preservation Board. We sent two direct mail pieces, and the purpose of those pieces was to encourage people to come to the meeting tonight and share their thoughts and opinions on what direction Council should take. We did some paid advertising in the Littleton Independent, on Facebook, on Nine News website banners. Our consultants conducted interviews with a total of 57 people in the community, those were lengthy interviews that lasted anywhere from 45 minutes to over an hour. Our website received a total of 45 emails, and Council was provided that spreadsheet, I think, yesterday, that summarized all those emails, the questions people had and the opinions that they expressed. Following all that engagement, the second poll was conducted July 20th through the 25th, again of 300 likely voters. What we've found is that the more engagement, the more understanding of the city's problem, and the more likelihood that residents were willing to support a solution. The half-cent sales tax increase increased to 68% in favor, that is 14% better than the poll in May, and the three-quarters of a cent sales tax rate increase went up 9% to 66%. With that, I'm going to turn it back over to Mark to talk with you more about your options tonight.
We spent a lot of time, Council, in talking about kind of the magnitude of the problem. One of the pieces of information we shared with our community is, you know, our financial forecasting, we do this for all funds, and we are showing that our capital project fund basically goes to zero in four years. And so that's kind of the real short version of the magnitude of the problem. You know, I think we need to also kind of step back a little bit and talk about some of the other options that we did look at. And, you know, this past year through COVID, all cities across the country struggled financially, you know, we cut $2 million out of operations in order for us just to get through the particular year. We had the CARES Act, and now the ARPA Federal Funds, you know, to help us, our business community and others, kind of get through this stage at this moment. That was all, you know, very, very useful, very, very helpful, but we still have, you know, I would say, a challenge as we look to the future. Our sales tax revenue is looking very positive the last few months, and I think that's very encouraging. We're hoping that the Delta variant and others, that's all, you know, part of history here in a few short months, but it's still some unknowns with that. So we do have a piece within the capital project fund we just must address. You know, and I said this publicly here, and I really mean it, I'm not overstating this, if we do not solve this problem, we're going to see the quality of life in this community slowly degrade right before our eyes. And that's a fact. We've got to solve this problem. One example, the easy one, is that we spend $1.4 million annually, typically, on the replacement of fleet, that's our police cruisers or public works vehicles, 1.4 million. Last year, we could only spend $200,000. Unsustainable. Irresponsible. We have to find a different solution. So the problem we've, in my opinion, we've done, you know, about the best we can to kind of push out a very complex message. Council knows, we looked at all sorts of alternatives here. We considered property tax probably early on, and probably discarded that pretty quickly. Property tax is, as we look at kind of a fairness or equity issue, we're trying to find a solution, perhaps a taxing solution here, where equity is achieved. And so when you look at the capital project fund, a lot of the things we're talking about, you know, Mineral and Santa Fe, or Broadway, those kind of major transportation improvement projects, are being used by people outside of the city. So property tax would not necessarily be the most equitable or fair approach. That was discarded. We considered a lodging tax as a possible alternative. According to polling results, pretty good support for that, but again, we have a magnitude of a problem of 6.5 million. When you talk about 1 million plus out of a lodging tax, clearly that's insufficient. We also looked at the increase in a marijuana tax, which polled the best. Unfortunately, our history with that is pretty short, and we just don't have enough reliable information to make a reasonable projection. In fact, it's pretty disappointing at this point, far below the million we had hoped. Maybe over time, that will change, maybe that's an alternative for the future. One of the other things that, of course, is that we can't cut our way out of this. We've done everything, in my opinion, in this organization to be about as lean as we can. In fact, we have data to demonstrate that for the amount of taxes paid, our citizens would get more service than probably any other city in the metro area, per capita, per cost. And so we're lean, and certainly last year made it even leaner, much more difficult. You know, and I've used some comparisons in the past, and I know that people have taken exception or misunderstood kind of the intent of that. Six and a half million, just the magnitude of that problem, the library and museum total operating budget is 4.5 million, so eliminating that's not going to solve the problem. Or the police budget, at 15 million, if I cut half of the police officers in our police department, you get there. We're not advocating for any of that. Those are draconian cuts. And so in my opinion, we can't cut our way out of this thing. We just have to find another revenue source. So here we are this evening, we're looking at two particular ordinances. One is at a half-cent sales tax, 50 cents on $100. And we've kind of targeted that towards the very specific problem we've been discussing for the last few years. $6.5 million is what we've projected, it's kind of the annual problem here. Again, the list that we've got on our webpage shows a $90 million-plus deficit. The project list is probably much bigger than that, but that's what we've identified over the last few years. And we are looking at trying to target some of this potential revenue here to fix the problems like here on the list, Mineral and Santa Fe, certainly our neighborhood streets and residential areas. In fact, in the polling results, that was one of the number-one issues, is for us to address that particular issue. We also know that we have some major projects in our downtown area. We have Denver Water coming in two years, is going to go right down Main Street, put in a new water main, and tear all the pavement up, all the sidewalk, and all the trees. So the question is, what are we going to put back? We have no funds to address that issue. The public works facilities. In fact, the polling results shows that that's actually fairly popular, looking at a lot of our buildings. We have one building in there that was built in 1948, and we've invested nothing in that since then. We've also got our library and our museum. Library in particular, we'd like to invest in that building, we have done just minimal maintenance, in fact, I would say it's irresponsible, the amount of maintenance that we've been able to do over there, just simply because of the lack of funding. The other question, of course, the Council asked here, is, well, what is 75 cents? What does that generate over perhaps the half-a-million, or the half-cent? This is 70, 75 cents on $100. Well, obviously, the short answer is that we can do more quicker. And so when I talked about the federally funded projects, obviously, this would be an additional advantage for us to have, you know, greater financial leverage against the federal funds. So major corridors, we'd be in a much better position. In fact, we are right now in the middle of a PEL process with CDOT, trying to identify what are the projects on Santa Fe that make sense for our community. We'd be in a position to tackle that. We certainly could do it with a half-cent, 75 cents would be a better position. When we talk about downtown, you know, I mentioned kind of the Denver Water Project, certainly Main Street, half-cent would certainly be able to position us. We've also had a lot of conversation in this community going beyond just Main Street. So when we look at kind of the broader downtown area, looking at corridors like Prince, the pedestrian improvements, deeper parking opportunities, and I think it really is, and we've had a lot of conversation with the downtown about the potential of a downtown development authority. Half-cent or three-quarter would position us so that we can partner with them to take on the parking issues of downtown. Clearly, we've all heard this from our residents in this community about our downtown parking. I think, too, it's also an opportunity for us to take a much more comprehensive look at our roadway medians. Lots of safety improvements, that's clear. Lots of safety improvements, that's clear, but we've been challenged with kind of landscaping and the lack of investment in irrigation systems. Keith Reacher, our Public Works Director is here, and he could tell you all about kind of the lack of investment we've made over decades in those systems, and we are paying the price for that. You know, just beyond that, we certainly have a lot of technology that we've invested through the federal funds. We had to kind of make this transition very quickly to be through our webpage, to be much more user-friendly for electronic transactions, cybersecurity. The entire country struggles with this, but we have a lot of work to do on the, on the technology side where the Capital Project Fund would be the opportunity to kind of reinvest in all of that to make us more business-friendly electronically. One of the big opportunities we have is the undergrounding of overhead utilities. Excel Energy, I think the last time I said, public service company, I still laugh every time I say that, but Excel Energy, we have a 1% underground fund where 1% of the general or the gross electrical sales goes into that fund, creates an opportunity for us to convert overhead utilities to underground. That work is very expensive. I think roughly the fund balance is about 4 million. That is not enough to go very far. So downtown would certainly be an opportunity for us to convert overhead to underground. But all the major corridors, and this I commented before, in my history of this issue, this is one of the most significant improvements that we could make in our community. And I, I know that every project I've ever done, the residents, when they see this kind of conversion of the overhead, makes a remarkable aesthetic change in their community. You know, parking and pedestrian improvements, we'd love to be in a better, much better position to partner with RTD, whether it's at Mineral and Santa Fe or here downtown, to kind of look at the opportunities to increase our parking. The High Line Canal, lots of conversation in this community about the asset of the High Line Canal. We'd love to be able to be in a position to kind of look at the crossings of Broadway or Mineral. Again, today, we have no resource for that. And then just a whole list of other buildings that we could invest in. Counsel, remember, we have over 30 buildings that the city owns here throughout our community. So we, certainly this one, museum, library, those are two of the most obvious, or the public works facilities. But we have buildings that go far beyond this, and there's a list of some of the things that we'd love to be able to kind of maintain and take on, but we're just not in a position So a couple of things I want to note. In the ballot language for both the half cent and three-quarter, it did change from the first reading to the second reading to, to issues, perhaps not substantial in words, but I think the intent is genuine and important. In the original language, we had listed that, of course, whether it's half cent or three-quarter, that there would be, groceries would be exempt for that. Well, that's true. But quite honestly, you know, there's a whole list in our city code of other types of, of issues that are exempt from sales tax. So we changed the language and just said, all other exemptions per our city code. The other thing changed that we made, and I think this is just to respect what our citizens are telling us, that we made it very prominent and very obvious that the investment in our city streets, maintenance, major reconstructions is the real priority here. We have heard that loud and clear from our community. They want that investment. So we made those changes, perhaps subtle, but again, very noteworthy. Also, within the ballots here, we've made a couple of other very significant statements. The funds collected from this particular issue would only be directed to the Capital Project Fund. They would not go to any other fund. They would not go to the general fund. They would not go to the sewer fund, no other place but the Capital Project Fund. We've heard over the last several months that, you know, I think a very reasonable request by our citizens, they're looking for high transparency. They want to know where their money's being spent. Very reasonable request. And so in the ballot itself, we're talking about a separate annual report accounted for separately from all the other funds of the city. And then once a year, we'll take that annual report to a citizen committee, and we're suggesting the Transportation Mobility Board, brand-new board. Citizens, council points those citizens. They review that, look at our revenue and expenditures, and we submit that annual report to the city council. Part of that report and part of that financial plan is that we are looking at a five-year, at least a five-year plan. When we talk about capital of this magnitude, you have to look at at least five years. And so we want to be able to show to our community, what are the expenditures, what are the projects for at least the next five years, and what is the expected revenue for that? All of this, then, of course, the council would be able to see. You know, you'd certainly have your opportunity to comment, making sure we're on task here, and then obviously, we would sell that and communicate that to our community every year. One of the questions, too, that's come up is, well, the, when are we, how are we going to deal with the issue of bonding? That's the ability to take the revenue stream, the projected revenue stream, and look at basically borrowing against that. The advantage is that when the cost of construction is higher than the cost to, the cost to incur that, that bond, then it is to the advantage of the city to take a bond on. In this particular case, we're going to have that conversation, assuming it, you know, it advances here and our community supports some measure. We'll talk about that probably in the first quarter of next year. We'd only do that once we have a very specific identified list of what is it we're going to build and when. And I think that's the best opportunity for us to talk about the bonding issue. So you have before the council here, before the community, we actually have two separate ordinances, one at three-quarters cent and one at half cent. And based on the direction from city council, we advance them both. We are here, of course, again tonight for the public hearing. You'll deliberate, and then we're asking council to consider one of the ordinances to advance for the November ballot. And so with that, counsel, that's the end of our presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right, counsel, do we have any questions before we go to the public hearing? Saying none, let's go right into our public hearing then in that case. All right. The time now is 7:02. Okay, speakers, you will have three minutes to address counsel on this topic. Please speak directly into the microphones. And for the record, please state your name, address, and/or district they live in. All right, so soon we get our list here. And if you have not signed up on the list, there will be available time for you to speak. Thank you. All right. We will have, first up, we'll have Pat Dunahay, followed by Drew Lang, and then Cal Murrow.
Pat Dunahay for PDA Road Gear at 1600 West Mineral. Hi, counsel. I'm here to lobby as a retail sales tax collector for the businesses like mine. You know, it's great, this is a sales tax issue, sales tax problem, I guess, and we got to collect it. We don't get a vote. I happen to do get a vote because I'm a resident. But, but I'm here just to speak on behalf of business a little bit. We chose Littleton, every one of us. You didn't choose us. We, we show our loyalty to the city and to the community every day by collecting sales tax. There's no right or wrong for us in whether we go with no sales tax or yes on a sales tax. We're okay, we're here for the city. You guys need to be here for us. We have to work together on all this. You know, we have every kind of event you can think of in Littleton. We, we spend millions, we've spent millions in culture stuff. We've never as much had a business day. We've never had a campaign for Small Business Week. Let's fight for business during the month of August, on and on and on. We just, it's just about the residents here. It's not about the businesses. And I think that's going to lead to a whole lot of problems in the future if we don't start to look at changing that a little bit. We, not only do we have to worry about collecting all the sales tax and keeping everything in check on our own businesses, we, we are burdened with a huge piece to property tax. You, you guys have all been to my building. Everybody's aware of it, up there at Mineral and South Park Lane. It's a little 15,000-square-foot building. We pay 80, we paid 80 grand last year in property tax. This year, we're going to pay 100. Where that money goes is the other part of the community that all of us are very concerned about. If we don't have it, those partners, we're all but done. You know, so of that 80 grand, Littleton Public Schools gets 53,000 of it, Rappahoe County gets 9,800, the Fire Department gets 7,500, South Suburban gets 6,800. Littleton only gets 1,600 bucks. But at bottom, if we don't have those things, we got no city. We've got, we've got nothing. This is a huge burden to business. So I'm just pleading to you all to listen to businesses, please, and to their property rights. You know, we don't go and oppose some resident that wants to expand his house, that wants to change his storefront. You know, be careful what we do with business here and property rights. At bottom, I am not in favor of a tax increase.
Thank you.
But I will be voting personally for it.
Thank you very much.
For 50 cents.
Thank you. We have Drew Lang is up, followed by Cal Murrow, and then Greg Renke.
Good evening, counsel. Thanks for having us. My name is Drew Lang. My business at 2329 West Main Street. I'm part owner of Investment Advisory Practice. I'm also a member of the business, Littleton Business Chamber with Pat and Cal. I can also serve as Cal's interpreter, if you can't understand what he has to say in a little bit. But ever since the sales tax issue began being kicked around, we had serious reservations about the timing of such. And we met with Sean Walsh, and we've met with city leadership, and we understand what the problem is. And so at the very least, we said that we would poll our members. We didn't just want to come out as a Littleton Business Chamber and say, we got to get behind this. And so we wanted to hear from the Business Chamber members as well as the Merchants Association. And so what we agreed to do was to poll our membership. And in that poll, we included in on an email, we included a letter from the city, basically outlining the need. We also included the YouTube Town Hall video that you all had, so that if people wanted to become more educated about it, they had the ability to do so. And so our question was really simple to both measures that you're looking at. And, and all we wanted to do was find out from businesses, the merchants in the, in the chamber, are you in favor or are you opposed to the sales tax? And that poll's been running, and it's even got some people voted as of today. This email was sent to 100-plus businesses in the city. We had 92 respondents as of this afternoon, 43 votes in favor of a sales tax increase, 49 opposed. And so we believe there's enough support to do something about solving the funding problems that Littleton has. But we hope that you're thoughtful about how much you push and what you ultimately go for. Because, and also, what are you going to do, Pat's comments, to help businesses, not only in downtown, but Aspen Grove, Broadway, South Park and Riverfront? So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Drew. All right, next up, we have Cal Murrow, then Greg Renke, and then Kalina Murrow.
Good evening, counsel, mayor. My name's Cal Murrow, 2299 West Main Street. I'm in favor of the city increasing the sales tax 75 cents to make sure improvement continue to be better than the surrounding neighborhood. My tenants, I polled them, and they're in favor of increasing the sales tax 50 cents as this will spread it thoroughly throughout the city. I want to take this opportunity to let all who is listening tonight know that I am not a greedy developer or property owner. I'm selective landlord, and on the contrary, I'm a hands-on property owner. I am on Main Street daily interacting with my tenants and others. One, I only have businesses that sale, that collect sales tax, I'm sorry. I only have businesses that are sales tax collectors. No. It, it is designated that way, so that all the taxes flow right to the city. It is important to be aware that the nine businesses I brought are legitimate businesses that are hands-on owners and operators. These are good people. They all work very hard and offer many cuisine varieties that bring a whole bunch of new faces from the surrounding neighborhood. And I sure hope that everyone here listening would patronize these fine other establishments in our city. I was blessed to have brought five, nine successful, well-established tenants that spent a ton of money improving their properties and make them attractive, so people from all around the area would support them. Doing so, these fine nine establishments are sales tax collectors for the city. And combined, they collect in excess of quarter of a million dollars in sales tax that comes to the city cover. I'm very proud of all the tenants I work, and I work hard on keeping them happy and make sure they stay in business by giving them reasonable lease rates and supporting them when needs be. Back in January and in the middle of a pandemic, my daughter Kalina and I were successful in signing a lease on the previous toast space with a new restaurant called Sukun. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Greg Renke, then Kalina Murrow, followed by Morgan McKenney.
Greg Renke, 5663 South Prince Street. I'm going to give you a perspective where I'm coming from and talking to many of the merchants. We just came out of COVID, and we're not sure where we're headed. For instance, I've got three containers coming from China because I sell Halloween stuff. Before COVID, it was $1,300 to get a container here. It's $13,000 each now. So we're going to have some huge price increases you're going to see over the next two, three years. I see where we need the, the tax increase. Just be careful of the timing of it. I think right now, we just got our plane off the ground. If we can just get to cruising speed, you can start serving the drinks. But let's make sure we get to 30,000 for a little bit. So if you raise it, I, I would be in support for the 5%, but I think if you go much higher, you're going to have some of us get a little nervous. Okay? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Kalina Murrow is up, then Morgan McKenney, and then Paul Bingham.
Okay, hi. I am not in support of it only because I did go meet with one of our tenants, and the cost of edamame has gone up 52 cents for them, which then carries over to the customer and their customers are noticing. And with that in mind, the tenant's lease is up in two years, and they don't have any reason to stay here if they're not able to fulfill their needs and make a decent profit. So I just think coming off of a pandemic, you're asking for a lot from people who really suffered.
Thank you. Next up, we have Morgan McKenney, then Paul Bingham, followed by Mitch Offit. Do we have Morgan? Okay. I presume that was you? Okay, thank you. I didn't know what the mistake was. It was, okay, thank you. So that means next up, we have Paul Bingham, then Mitch Offit, and Pat Hornberger.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and counsel. Paul Bingham, 236 West Delaware Circle, District 3. As most of you know, I follow the city's budget operations and revenue sheets and all of that stuff. When this first came up, I'm thinking, oh my gosh, we probably don't need to do that. And I've had, had several emails with Mark, who just did a wonderful job of explaining this whole thing, and I'm going to try not to job of explaining this whole thing, and I'm gonna try not to duplicate very much of what he has said. But, you know, what is the problem? Well, we finally got to the point where, oh, it's not just the budget, it's the, it's the capital fund that's the problem. What's the problem with that? Well, the expenses, it pays for an increasing array of technical things, cameras for the police, and all sorts of infrastructure things, transportation, old buildings like the nineteen forty-eight building and all that. Well, so that's the expenses from this fund. What's the income to it? Well, there's basically three things, like Mark explained. There's a building use tax from new development. Well, that's pretty volatile. Highway users fund, as we all know, that's pretty much going downhill with electric cars and whatnot. And an annual three-point-one-million infusion from the general fund that is earmarked for road projects that started in twenty-twenty, when the fire department bailed out on us. And that was pretty neat, three-point-one-million. Well, the proposed solution of this whole thing is to increase the sales tax rate and send that increase directly to the capital fund. So everybody knows where that's going. It's going smack-dab into the capital fund. And Mark has done a fine job, along with Kelly, of talking about all the things that we need to do. So it boils down to a need of six-and-a-half million a year. How do we get that? Well, point-five does that. And I'm about out of time here. Point-seven-five provides more than that. We have been talking about six-and-a-half mil. The public, I think, has kind of zeroed on the six-and-a-half mil. I really think that's where we need to stay with our ask. It's point-five for six-and-a-half mil. Please, counsel, proceed with your ballot with point-five percent. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Next up, we have Mitch Offit, then Pat Cronenberg, and then Kyle Schlechter.
Hello, counsel. My name's Mitch Offit, seven-eight-two West Kaylee Avenue, District Three. I'm a lifetime Colorado native, longtime Littleton resident. Let me first bring up, I went through your financials, and I give you kudos for generally really tight budgetary discipline. But I have one little bothersome detail that I don't think you guys have probably addressed generally. I see ever-increasing homeless population, and it may be, it relates to expenditures that within there. We just, I said, we've just seen a report of Denver City and County spent forty to a hundred thousand per homeless person as a study. If Littleton addresses, and I know Littleton is addressing this homeless problem as we currently speak, I've seen the, you have the tri-city solution that's in progress, and that, that maybe is sufficient, but this is something that we have to look at, as an upcoming expenditure that I think is bothersome, both from a financial side and from a crime side. My wife uses Woodlawn Shopping Center and the gym, and she's been assaulted three times by homeless people who have attempted to physically touch her, kiss her. And we've, I've gone to city council, I've gotten some action with LPD coming in and making presents and taking these people and at least stopping them in their tracks. But I do not want to see if part of the budget, I do not want to see forty to a hundred thousand dollars spent with the Denver model on that. That's all I have to say with that. Otherwise, I give kudos on budgetary expenditures. What I do want to emphasize, like the last person, I do support the point-five expenditure per dollar, saving per dollar expenditure. But I, the reason I say that is, the need is there, but we also have a, we also have a federal infrastructure coming in, and I understand part of that is matching, but part of it isn't, from what I've read. Also, and your budget, people can tell me this, if I misinterpret this, I see in your figures that for twenty-twenty-one, your projected, and I know it's a projection, your projected reserve surplus after expenses and income, incoming revenue, is a twenty-three percent surplus. To me, that's a pretty fat, at least a yearly cushion. That must be built into this as part of people's consideration.
Thank you, Mitch.
Yeah, and last thing is...
Your time's expired, Mitch.
Okay. Please, please consider the point-five. I think it's responsible. Last but not least, I see also that you have a fifteen-year term for this.
Mitch, your time has expired.
And it must, must be sunsetted. I've seen governments spend, take a tax increase and stretch it out too far. Thank you.
Thank you, Mitch. All right, next up, we have Pat Cronenberg, then Kyle Schlechter, and then Julie Radulovich.
Good evening, counsel. It's great to see you in the new council chambers. I congratulate you on getting to this point. A lot of hard work was involved, and this is a big decision. For too long, the city has been on a starvation diet, and we all know that nothing costs the same as it did twenty years ago, let alone two years ago. There's a big part of me that wants to tell you, go for the three-quarters of a cent. It would be great to tackle the other items that staff has identified. However, I support the half, half percent, and this is why. When people are polled, they tend to be far more, they see themselves as far more benevolent than they really are. And when it comes to the privacy of the poll, the polling booth, the voting booth, they are far less so. And I think this poses a risk for the three-quarter cent. As a city, we don't have much of a culture of asking citizens for more tax revenue. We just haven't really been in the habit of doing that. And so our muscles have not been used a lot when it comes to that. So I believe we should go easy with the point-five. With not much effort, it's very easy to cast the three-quarters of a cent as excessive, especially when a lot of your messaging to date has been meeting the major needs with the half percent. And finally, people are cranky. I'm afraid that three-quarters versus the half will give them an excuse to vent and not just say no, but say heck no. Finally, keep in mind that a decision to increase sales, the sales tax rate, needs to be made while we enact productive land use policies and zoning that supports robust retail tax generation. Sales tax does not exist in a silo. It's dependent on our land use. And while I recommend you go with the half percent, I want you to know that I'll support whatever you all decide and work as hard as I can to see that it passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Next up, we have Kyle Schlechter, then Julie Radulovich, and Dan Rubulich after that.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and counsel. Kyle Schlechter, District Two. You guys got a big decision coming up here tonight, the magnitude of which the city manager explained quite clearly. He made a very apt comparison to the fire merger from a few years ago, and how important that was for the city to make that decision and move forward. I'm glad I was, I'm proud to be one of the six members to vote for that. As you guys have seen for presentation after for the last few months here, probably seen about six, seven, eight times, doing nothing is not an option. We can't cut our way out of this. And so here you guys are to decide between two options for a sales tax increase. I just wanted to provide a little feedback. As I've been walking around the city, knocking on doors, talking to hundreds of citizens over the past few weeks, an overwhelming majority of the people that I've actually had a conversation with support this idea. Granted, not everyone answers the door, but the people I've talked to agree with this decision to move forward with the sales tax increase. And so the polling numbers that you guys have seen is real. It's out there. There's support for this amongst the community. And I just wanted to share that with you, because I know not all of you are out there knocking on doors right now, talking to people. And whatever your decision is, I want to let you know that I will support it and continue working to get this thing passed, because I know it's in the best interest of the city moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Cal. Next up, we have Julie Radulovich, and then Dan Radulovich, followed by Chris Cole.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and city council. So I have lived here in Littleton most of my life, and so I'm proud to be a Littleton citizen. And, you know, I feel like, yes, it's important that we invest in the city, and we need to do that. So coming in front of you today, I support the point-seven-five percent increase. And the reason why I support that, I know twenty-five cents on a hundred dollars probably doesn't make, isn't a big deal for me. It might be a big deal for others, and that's okay. But when I think of long-term, I think when we're doing the point-five percent, it's really just a fix for today. And as we know, costs are going up, edamame's going up, everything's going up. And so if we do the point-seven-five, I think that is probably the most prudent thing as we move into the future. I know, you know, as the city council and the management team has been working and talking about the Pell Study and the TIPS grants, I think it's gonna be important for the city to position itself, to make sure that we have the funds to take advantage of those federal matches. You know, I work in public accounting, so a lot of my clients get a lot of federal funding, and these matches are real. And the issue is, is you have to have the money when they're ready. So I think it's nice to have that extra money so that, you know, Keith and Mark and their team can really make sure that we've got that, so we can leverage those funds. Other thing is, I want to make sure, you know, we haven't had a sales tax increase, I think, over thirty years or so, Tiffany? Fifty? Okay. So that's, that's huge. And as Pat talked about, you know, we haven't flexed that muscle, but we have to be careful with how we flex that muscle. Again, why I want to do the point-seven-five is, I don't want to have you guys come back in five years and say, hey, we need, we need another point-five, right? And the one thing I shared with Mark is, you know, as a citizen, every other year, we have something coming on the ballot from Littleton Public Schools. Now, I don't have kids that go to school, but those ballots pass overwhelmingly, because people are willing to invest in the school system and invest in kids. And the way I look at the sales tax is, this is us investing in the community. And it's important, and I think we need to do it, and it's, it's the way to go. And when I look at it, you know, I can look at it as my accountant being the greedy number person, so I'll admit that. But, you know, when I look at this, yeah, I'm willing to pay the sales tax, I'm willing to invest, because really what that does is it increases the neighborhood and increases the value, really, of my house, and people want to come here. So I see it as, it really kind of is, is self-fulfilling, I guess, when I look at the long term. So I would support the point-seven-five. I think the interesting thing to continue to remember is, on that equity piece that Mark had talked about, this isn't a hundred percent borne by the city of Littleton residents. We have a lot of people that come in, so I think we need to remember that, too, to take advantage of that piece. So lastly, since I'm an accountant, I understand how important the general fund is, so if we can save some money and keep it in the general fund, I think that gives the management team more flexibility with other areas of need that may come up. So, thanks.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Dan Radulovich, followed by Chris Cole and John Spencer. How am I doing on that name, Dan?
Better than the last mayor. How about that? Dan Radulovich, seven-thousand South Gallup, District Three. So I, too, support the zero-point-seven-five percent sales tax increase for many of the same reasons that my wife just laid out. Clearly, I guess we live in the same house. But just as a few examples as to what's going on here, right now, the city has been awarded twelve grants for transportation projects that need local match funding. These projects include Broadway, Littleton Boulevard, Broadway and Mineral, Santa Fe and Mineral, Platte Canyon and Bowls, Platte Canyon and Mineral, and the Bellevue Corridor, to name a few. This is twenty-three million dollars of grant funding that requires a five-million-dollar match by us. Right now, we have no plan on how to pay for that. We need some sort of increase to do this. Without any increase, we're probably gonna look at giving some of that grant money back, and good luck ever getting a grant from that agency again. As Mark had mentioned, Denver Water is gonna be replacing all of the water lines downtown. That's a giant project. How do we want that to look? We need, we have to have a plan in place before this happens, so that we can not only improve it, but possibly even reimagine that whole area. That's what we need to be looking at here. Federal government is clearly, they passed a large infrastructure bill, and I think your timing with this could be absolutely wonderful, as far as being able to leverage the dollars that we're going to get. Hopefully, these matches come down a little bit from twenty percent. They may or may not, but I doubt it. As an example, a flyover at Mineral and Santa Fe, that's gonna be about ninety million dollars in today's dollars. That's an eighteen-million-dollar match by us, twenty percent. That's an enormous number. That's only gonna go up. It's not, it's not going down. I can guarantee you that. The city is able to find grants to help with transportation products, but the, projects, but the burden of street maintenance falls completely on this city. It has been drastically underfunded for many years, and has multiple miles of road that need to be, need not only maintenance, but complete replacement in some, some cases. The zero-point-seven-five percent increase would allow a city to catch up quicker and get into a, what's basically a normal maintenance cycle. This would be greatly assisted by a good bonding strategy as well, and I can't stress the importance of that. That also needs to happen in order to get things done and get us caught up on these maintenance schedules. This not only will help with the transportation infrastructure, but this increase will also replace inadequate buildings that are meant to protect some of the most expensive equipment that we have in the city. It's going to provide police body cameras, which are now state-mandated. We don't have a choice. We have to provide those. That money's gotta come from somewhere. And lastly, it's also going to provide our city with updates to technology to combat things like ransomware and things of that nature. Lastly, I know that, I've watched study sessions. I'm a nerd, I guess. But I notice that most of you are against sunsetting this. Don't forget that that's a tool out there. It is, it is a tool, and one of the better government checks is when us citizens see, you know, what's going on, and when you ask for the extension, we can make the, we can make the decision.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time and your service.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you. Next up, we have Chris Cole, then John Spencer, and then Andy Hancock.
Counsel, hello, Mayor. I'm Chris Cole, six-five-five-eight South Hill Street.
If you will, directly, these are directional microphones.
Sure.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I thought I was just signing up for attending, so excuse a little bit of, a little bit of a lack of my flow.
Now we're telling you what to do.
But understand that from property owners and business owners, you are in a long line of tax collectors and looking for your capital fund. You're in a long line. And the line begins to affect people. Who does it affect? It affects taxpayers. It affects property owners. And I will support the, the, the five percent and the, or the point-zero-five percent. And to the comments about that all these costs are going up, I, I hope none of you are gonna get that math wrong, because we're dealing with percentages here. And what's really going up is the number of services that are needed to be supplied from the burden of cities and neighborhoods. So I did some quick math off of that ninety million, and I heard a lot about spending money to make it easier for commuters and public downtown. And the, I heard of a lot of improvements for that, which is like taxing to make things busier. And that, when I did the math of, when do we get, where, how much can we spend? Can we spend ten million on improving streets and neighborhoods? It was hard for me to get there, when it all started piling in. So, once again, it is the number of things that we're paying for. And this idea that we're catching up, I don't buy that. We'll be chasing this, we'll be chasing this, this rabbit for a while. So be careful with our money, and I support the half of one percent.
Thank you, Chris. Next up, we have John Spencer, then Andy Hancock, and then Pat, Pam Chadbourne.
Good evening, Mayor and fellow counsel. Thanks for having us here tonight. My name's John Spencer, fifty-nine, seventy-six, South Banock Street. I've been a Littleton resident for about fifteen, sixteen years now. Moved here because we loved the town, the character, what it had to offer, and the potential for transition and growth. Over the last few years, we've seen Colorado explode. The amount of commuting that goes through this town is exorbitant. Unfortunately, we find ourselves here having... Unfortunately, we find ourselves here having to figure out how to maintain our infrastructure. I drive on Broadway and Littleton every day. I can tell you in the last five years, you can witness it deteriorating just before your eyes. And I understand that taxing business and sales is a hard choice. It's hard for business to stomach, but that's really our only recourse in this town to get funding. I would add to some of the comments I heard earlier about, you know, that, that being a detriment to business. It could be a detriment to business, but if our roads are gravel, we have weeds everywhere, our sidewalks are falling apart, who's going to want to come to Littleton? Littleton is more than just Main Street. That's our crown jewel. We need to take care of it. But the neighborhoods, the main, the main axes drives that go through here, Broadway, Bellevue, Mineral, Littleton Boulevard, they are heavily used. I'm a proponent for taxing the people or tolling the people that drive through this town. Unfortunately, I guess that's not an option. I learned.
It was mentioned, though.
But if, but if we can harness those dollars of people driving through our town to stop and spend them in our businesses, I would also encourage you to, we don't have necessarily economic gardening anymore, but as Pat mentioned, with improved zoning and improved, improved economic development to get more businesses here. If we can get more businesses here, we can generate more tax. The burden is less. We can improve our community. This is the only way that I see that we can do this that's feasible and reasonable for all of us. And it's unfortunate you guys find yourselves here having to be the bearers of bad news. A lot of people aren't going to like you for it. A lot of people might not vote for you for it. But it's not something that you caused. It's just where we find ourselves. And if we don't take care of it now, Littleton's just going to deteriorate. And that's, that's to none of our benefits. So I appreciate your time this evening. I'm in support of the 3/4% increase, but I could live with the half percent. I think that's the most reasonable thing that we can do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. And thank you for making the assumption that people do like us out there. Okay, next up, we have Andy Hancock, then Pam Chadbourne, then Krista Kaefer.
Thank you, Council. I have to admit, I'm the same as Chris. I thought I was signing up for the meeting. But anyway, I just had a couple of questions as I'm listening to this. I do think anytime that you have a sales tax increase, there's a certain amount of, well, what happened? Why didn't we plan for this? And why didn't we budget for it? And I would just encourage you, I think you've made a great point that it probably makes sense that we do need a sales tax increase. But I would encourage you not to drop. It sounds like we're dropping the lodging tax and the marijuana tax just because we don't know or we don't have the information about it. And I think that's a mistake. I think it would be very easier to put those all together and say, we're trying all of these things to raise this taxes and just not burden on businesses and sales taxes. So that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Andy. Next up, we have Pam Chadbourne, and then Krista Kaefer, followed by Paul Bush.
Hi, Council. My name is Pam Chadbourne. I live a block, and I have from here in District 1. I've got concerns about this tax increase. And while I agree that the city needs money for facilities and roads, I think we need money for several other things. And I don't like a restriction to just the capital fund. I think that's a really bad idea. If it's passed, it needs to be sunset. And part of my problem with this is that the budget simply hasn't been explained as a whole. We cannot see whether, for example, reserves have been considered for four years. From what I've seen, the dip in the capital fund is four years. And then it starts to recover. So why are you asking for an indefinite tax increase? We can transfer funds from the general fund to the capital fund and get through that period. There might be ways to take other funding to cover that short term and do less in terms of trying to get revenue. I'm also concerned about restricting it to capital fund because there's other things I want more. Affordable, accessible, low-energy housing incentives. We're embarking on changing the land use code radically. Cities are rarely this dumb to remove the protections and the light that will endanger the legacy we inherited for a kind of mediocrity of development. So the least you could do is incentivize affordable, accessible, and low-energy housing, which will pay off in the next 60 years. Within 20 years, we're going to need all of those things in housing, and you need funds to incentivize that. We need more public housing. We need to protect Geneva Village, not just the lodge. And where's the money for that? We need to replace downtown streetlights and implement model lighting ordinance. I appreciate the comment about undergrounding, but it is not the cheapest thing you can do to get the most payback for the city. The cheapest thing you can do to improve the looks of the city is a model lighting ordinance with lighting that does not create glare, but illuminates what you need to see. That is the single cheapest, best thing a city can do. And it's a protection, again, when you are contemplating a code that's going to unleash a development wave. We need a historic district overlay on Littleton Boulevard so that we can, from Broadway to Lowell, have an overlay district, invest in design guidelines, help owners create that environment. Historic districts pay off over decades, and they are very resilient to downturns. We could have BMBs on Littleton Boulevard, and people would come for the mid-century modern environment. So those are just some of the things I would like you to consider. Sunset it if you pass it. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, Krista Kaefer, then Paul Bush. And Paul is the last one on the list. So if there's anybody else who'd like to speak, we'll be calling you to come on up.
Good evening. I'm Krista Kaefer, and I live in the Mayor's District, District 2. I'm also running for Littleton City Council at large. I have to admit, I was one of those skeptics. I took the poll. I almost never take polls, but I took the poll in May. And I, I said no. I said no to the sales tax increase. And then after that, I did my due diligence. And I read, and I went on the website, and I talked to the city manager, and I talked to others, and I saw the needs for myself. And I have come to support not only the half cent, but also the 3/4 cent tax increase. But I want to be sensitive to those who were more harmed by the pandemic than myself. I want to be sensitive to businesses that are collecting that, or that will be collecting that tax. I want to be sensitive to the fact that we are in an inflationary period right now, which means prices are going up no matter what. So I would like to encourage the council to vote for that half cent tax. I think that that would be, in keeping with sort of a respect for the taxpayer, to say, this is not an easy time, but these needs are so very, very pressing. I've never voted for a tax increase in my life. Well, except for once, though. And it was for the Littleton, it was for Littleton City Schools. And the reason I was able to vote for that is that they showed me what they had done and what they needed to do. I think if we have this half cent tax, we will be able to show the taxpayers that we have done great things with that money. And if the needs are still there, we can come back for a little bit more. But being able to show what we've done will simply, will set the stage for being able to show that we need more. I plan on voting for whatever it is that you put in front of us, but I do want to encourage the council for all those other skeptics out there to put that half cent in front of the voter. Thank you.
Thank you, Krista. Next up, we have Paul Bush.
My name is Paul Bush. I live at 2482 West Sunset Drive. I'm in District 4.
Paul, you're kind of a tall guy. If you could maybe move the mic up for you. Thank you.
Is that better?
Perfect.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Do I need to restate my name and address?
You're still Paul?
Yes, I am.
No.
Okay. 2482 West Sunset Drive, District 4. Strong consideration must be made regarding the lodging tax on hotel and short-term rentals. People who utilize the hotels in short-term rentals will also use the facilities that come with this capital tax or these capital funds. I understand that the $1 million that are forecasted that will come out of this lodging tax sounds minor compared to what will come out of the half or 0.5% and 3/4% tax increase. But $1 million is a lot bigger than zero. Therefore, anybody who benefits from the capital projects that come from this increase should pay for those same facilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. All right, that does it for the sign-up list. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? We'll start with you, then we'll go you.
Afternoon, or evening, Council and Mayor. My name is Steve Barr. I live in District 3, 1637 West Canal Court. I was considering not coming up to speak because I think city staff have done such an excellent job over the past number of months, making the case for the sales tax increase overall. My background is in engineering and capital improvement project planning for much, much smaller communities than this. And I can say with some certainty that the 0.5 cent increase is going to be, it's obviously essential. And I don't see there being any way around that. But I also wanted to throw out there, because I don't think anyone has spoken to this yet, that the infrastructure that was proposed for the 0.75 cent increase, you should not just look at that as icing on the cake. That's part of the city infrastructure as well. So if you don't pass the 0.75 cent increase now, those projects are, still have enormous value to this community. And I think it's well worth considering other ways to fund those projects in the future. So I just wanted to show my support for the sales tax increase overall, but also to say, don't look at it as icing on the cake or some sort of bonus infrastructure. This is all work that, if it doesn't get done now, it may eventually need to get done in the future. So take that into consideration when looking at this increase. And I just want to applaud the city staff again for making the case to the public as well as to council. So thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Steve. Next up, anyone else after the speaker?
Good evening, City Council. I appreciate you having the time for all of us to be able to make public comment this evening. My name's Wilson Skomel. My wife, Lee, and I just recently moved into Littleton area. I've grown up here. So I'm from the area. I've been here all my life. We just purchased our first home. I live on 519 West Abernyn Avenue.
Could you spell your last name as well?
Sure. S.K.O.M., as in Michael. A.L.
Thank you.
Sure. I'll keep things brief as I can. Tax me. Tax us. Put forth a ballot measure for a 0.75 increase in sales tax. The margins for success in the voting, I understand, yes, you have to interpret that within the realities of what people will actually vote for. But at the same time, I feel like we are extremely overdue for arming the city with financial strength that it needs to both maintain itself and improve itself on a long-term. I think Littleton is a community with incredible amount of potential, and it seems like it's been locked away for 50 years by overly conservative financial policy. And it's resulted in what I sense is a fearful community that it's terrified so much to lose what it has, that at the same times, it's ignored building for its future generations. That includes failing to raise sales tax for almost half a century. We also refuse to entertain a lodging tax while individuals and corporations who aren't citizens here, and I've done personal research of my own, which I'm happy to share at some point, we are burdening already in-crisis Littleton housing market with unlicensed and barely regulated short-term rental businesses. We displace hundreds of would-be taxpayers and contributing Littleton citizens. We are also encouraging, and I'm glad that we're actually taking these steps right now to encourage zone and redevelopment parts of the city for more housing and business opportunities, but we have to commit to that as well. Everything that's been laid out by the Funding Fix Correspondence has just shown a city to me that's been bleeding itself dry for almost multiple decades, and now the bill is due. I think that there's much more work to be done than just the 0.75 cent increase. And I think it's a step in a long, in a great direction. Ultimately, we want to achieve the goals of the future, not just maintain and put a Band-Aid on the bleeding wounds of the present. And we, to achieve that future, it demands the sacrifice of the individual. We give ourselves and each other, and, you know, we personally sacrifice to accomplish a greater aim than we are able to commit to ourselves. And indeed, the signs of a great civilization, it's a common phrase and maybe cliche, but at the same time, the sign of a great community is one where its elders plant trees under which they know that she'll never sit. It takes that sense of forward-looking thinking. And we must boldly meet the future or not fear it. My wife and I, we are thrilled to be a part of this community. I've always wanted to be here. And in order to do what we want, to accomplish what we want, to build a future for our children, we must build for that which is unseen. And that's the legacy that I would like to continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it Olson, E.N. or O.N.?
O.N.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else? We have, Mitch, you've already spoke. You don't get another crack at it. Sorry, but you went over in the first place. Thank you, though. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, it is 7:50. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And Council, let's go ahead and take a break. It is 7:51, and we'll come back at 8 o'clock. All right, I'd like to reconvene our meeting. It is eight o'clock. Council or staff, did you have any response to the comments that were made?
If I may, Mayor, Council, just a few comments. First of all, I guess I deeply appreciate, you know, kind of a level of participation here this evening, and quite honestly, some great comments and insights. So Mitch talked a little bit about the homeless problem, and obviously, we've talked fair amount here with Council already. We have the tri-city kind of action plan that'll be pending for Council review. We'll talk about that more in September. We are looking at federal funds to advance maybe the city's portion of that. We are looking to the county to take more of a lead with that in the long run. Not necessarily so much a capital project issue, but certainly something that we know our community is very sensitive about, and we're trying to take action. Mitch also talked a little bit about kind of the surplus and how we are using that and the twenty-three percent references for the general fund, and we are obligated here by best management practice to keep a certain amount of reserve in the general fund, but not in the capital. So I'm gonna turn to Tiffany and maybe just ask her to explain that just a little bit.
Good evening, Council. Tiffany Houghton, Finance Director. Yes, I believe that twenty-three percent that was referenced is in the general fund. And if you recall, we have a fund balance policy where we have to maintain eight to eighteen percent in our fifth year. And so part of the reason that we do five-year plans, especially in the general fund, is to kind of manage and make sure that we're following that policy. We have a lot of needs every year. We have staffing needs. We have services that we'd like to provide. And so having that five-year plan allows us to utilize some of that fund balance to offer those additional services to the community and to also help staff to execute those new services. But we do have a five-year plan, and we always strive to stay within that eight to eighteen percent.
Again, that's the general fund, capital project fund. We don't necessarily work off a percentage. As you know, as our forecast is based on our needs and expected revenue, in the fourth year, we're looking at basically taking that down to zero. Chris actually made kind of an interesting couple of observations, and I know something that's pretty important to the Council here is that when we look at kind of the list of projects here, certainly what we've identified as a deficit, you know, striking a balance between what we spend in the neighborhoods versus, you know, some larger arterials, I think that is the challenge. I think over time, it's making sure that we have the correct balance of projects and how they affect our neighborhoods, those people who live here permanently versus those who visit. So I think a very astute observation and certainly a challenge, and that we must pay attention to that particular issue. I think several people commented on kind of other opportunities in taxation. I know the Council hasn't forgotten about that. I know that we've tried to decide what, how much of this do we really put on the ballot and whether or not it's too confusing, but certainly in time, lodging tax or increase in the retail marijuana tax are options to, you know, perhaps look at the future for all sorts of different purposes. But here, this evening, we're specifically looking at the kind of the sales tax and what that might be targeted for. So with that, Council, I guess that'd be the end of my comments unless there's questions.
Anything from the city attorney? Nothing from the city attorney?
Mark, would you just address, Paul in the back had a question regarding why we're not going after lodging tax and marijuana tax. Would you just address that briefly?
Well, you know, I think, yeah, this year. I think it's, the Council had some conversation here with our consultants, Sean Walsh and Todd Vitale, just about, you know, what's the typical strategy when you look at a whole layer or different options and whether or not, you know, people tend to look at that and they may only vote for one and not all three. Well, you know, that kind of pattern is what we're trying to avoid. We want to be very specific and make it very clear about the intent. So I think the Council's trying to strike a balance here. Let's not put too much out there that confuses people as opposed to trying to pick the ones that are most important. And clearly, the sales tax is the one that gets at the problem here. The other two do not come anywhere close to that particular issue. But again, you know, part of a strategy as we look to the future, depending on where, you know, our challenge is here and as time goes on.
And we're thinking about what with those two taxes?
Well, I would hope that the Council would consider those for next year, to be honest with you, not this year. Council would typically have that conversation at your retreat the first of February.
Okay, thank you. Who else, Council? Let's start going. Anybody else? Well, I'll go ahead and I'll add a few comments here. Thank you, Mark. Thanks to all the citizens that did come in, some great comments. And I understand the question about why are we not including the marijuana tax as well as the lodging tax with this, and I think as the city manager just said, it, for statistics stuff, it almost becomes too much for, of a risk for us if we really want something to pass, assuming we're gonna pass a request for, or to put something on the ballot in the first place. It almost becomes too much for citizens to consider by the time they get to one. They might like the marijuana vote, the lodging vote, then they get the sales tax and they vote sales tax down, but we'll get the others. And while the marijuana tax of a million dollars is a lot of money, and lodging is about, was it one and a half million? I think it was. It's a lot, but it just isn't enough to get us going. That's why we're going for the sales tax because, considering the sales tax, because it brings in, it was at six and a half at five, at point five, and I think it was nine point eight for the point seven five percent. So it is a strategy of doing that. It's, we're trying to limit the risk a little bit on that. So anyway, thank you for all the citizens, for all the great comments that you made. I had seen some stuff online, people saying, well, why don't the city just reduce their budget some? And I know the city manager, and it is the city manager's responsibility, he has reduced the budget quite a bit. You mentioned a number earlier. I know staff, you have had to lay folks off for the, because of the pandemic stuff, and folks, we're not just gonna bring some positions back. So we have reduced, or the city manager has made some reductions there. We're in, it is budget season, and you, we have the priority-based budgeting, so there will be some programs that aren't gonna make the budget this year. It's just the way it is, because we just don't have the funds to do what we're required to do, and that's take care of our infrastructure. That's what we're supposed to be doing. We need to have our police there as well. So with that in mind, it just becomes difficult for us as a council. We have studied this many times. We've studied this and, and the budget, that's where I was going with that, was, when the budget, it's time that we just have to make a decision on what do we cut? And you've cut so many things already. I know you're budgeting to bring some of the stuff back, I think for the museum and also for the library, and thank you, because those are two things that our city absolutely loves, absolutely loves. But then there's other things that are maybe good programs, but it just isn't gonna make it because we have, can't do everything, unfortunately. The city, the city is receiving some of the ARP funds from the feds this year in the neighborhood of twelve million dollars. I think we have received six million dollars already, and we're waiting to hear from the Treasury Department on how those funds can be expended. But again, that's a total of twelve million dollars. It has to be spent by January first, twenty twenty-five. And again, that's a great shot in the arm to get things done, but we need something that's gonna continue or sustain the city going forward. It's great money to help us, but it really isn't even enough just for our streets to keep that going. And with our, I think your estimate was ninety million dollars on the deferred maintenance, you know, we have a lot of maintenance that, as somebody had mentioned, we're probably, it's gonna be very difficult to ever catch up on that number, but that's a huge number that we gotta strive to get to it and make things better. And then we also have to keep in mind that maintenance, that we deferred maintenance, that besides that, we also have to keep our current maintenance going. We, we're gonna do a better job. I think with our staff that we have now, they put together plans that the city has not had in the past, or at least not as, as efficient as they are now. And of course, we have computers and a lot of other stuff. So we, not only do we have to catch up or make some strides toward our deferred maintenance, we also have to keep up what we have. And just in my neighborhood alone, which is Aberdeen Village, those streets there, how many miles are those, three? Is it, how many miles is that, Keith?
Total miles in there?
Just in Aberdeen, yeah.
Yeah, about four.
Yeah, about four. And it's a million dollars, about a million dollars a mile.
Correct.
Yeah, and those, and those streets have been put off for quite a while, and they're in bad shape. And they're not the only streets in the city that are in bad shape, but about a million dollar a mile, and there's lots of miles out there of street work that needs to happen. And then I think you said, what is it, about a hundred thousand a mile for just to maintain? Is it?
Yeah, about a hundred thousand a mile for maintenance treatments, and then about a million a mile for reconstruction, which is the situation in Aberdeen Village.
Yeah, thank you. So it's gonna take a lot of funds going forward, and that's why concerning me, as far as putting the sunset on this, it almost puts us back into a position where we are today. I think previous councils have done a very good job getting us to this point. Now it's up to this council, really, to look for the future, that we've got to make things better. And I think that is it for my comments. Who else would like to go? We'll go Councilmember Grove.
I support a point five percent increase for a lot of the reasons that the citizens mentioned tonight. It matches what we've asked the citizens and what we've talked about over the last couple of months. I think it's a little difficult to do in an election year, but we're doing it, and we, it's long overdue. I would love to go to the higher amount, but I want to ensure that it gets passed, and so that's what I would support.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Milliman.
I want to take this opportunity to really extend an enormous amount of gratitude to our city staff, Kelly Nardi specifically, with the huge amount of public engagement that occurred over a very short period of time to get this, to get this information out to our citizens and to our consultant Sean Walsh. Thank you. I agree with Pam. I would support the half-cent sales tax. And quite frankly, the reason why is I want it to pass. I really want this to pass. We need this sales tax increase. Fifty years is too long. That's not fair to our city. And so I wish this would have been taken care of a long time ago, and unfortunately or fortunately, it's landed on our laps. And I think it is an imperative, and it is our duty to get this, to get this on the ballot and allow the citizens to exercise their right to vote. And it does sound like we have a lot of support around our community to do this. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Fay.
I support the, I support the half-cent per dollar. I like very much the idea of spending exactly what you need to spend and not spending more than you need to. And so since that matches what we need for the budget, I think it's ideal. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Driscoll.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody, for coming out tonight. I applaud you for standing up and expressing your opinions about this. When I spoke with citizens, much like Kyle, a lot of us have been talking this up a little bit, most people don't even know what our sales tax is, which frankly surprises me. And when I mention going from three dollars to three dollars and fifty cents, they don't blink an eye. When I mention going from three dollars to three dollars and seventy-five cents for a hundred dollars, they don't blink an eye. This will pass either way, three quarters or fifty cents. This began four years ago. Mark has been pounding this into our heads for four years, and if anybody's gonna take the blame for getting this on the ballot this year, it's me, and I'm up for reelection. And if you don't vote for me because of this measure, then so be it. But it is, I think, so vitally important that we, we look at this three quarters. Julie and Mark, the couple that spoke back-to-back, did a phenomenal job of laying this out and what this money could be used for. Not get, not being able to match federal grants or federal grants is really, it's unfortunate. As Mark said, they don't come back to you. You get this opportunity once. If you can't match it, they won't come back to you. And so we're talking about this, one quarter, people, on a hundred dollars. That's all we're talking about. So, you know, it's, it's one of those that, when you talk about twenty-five cents, there isn't a person in this room that can't afford twenty-five cents. You're, I don't want to go back to the citizens in five years and say, we need twenty-five cents. I want this to be done with. Fifty years, as Kelly said, way too long. This has been pushed down the road for too long. Fifty cents, seventy-five cents, to me, I don't think anybody in this room can blink an eye at it and won't know the difference. You know, this, this tax does come back to the citizens and also our visitors. This gets us, you know, on par with, you know, our surrounding areas, three quarters. So again, I would ask, I know people already said the fifty cents, but... So again, I would ask, I know people already said the 50 cents, but man, it's just to me, we're talking about 25 cents, people. And if you can't afford 25 cents, as Carol said, you know, she wants only spend what we need, well, that, you know, that doesn't get us, that gets us to where we just want to be. I don't want to just get us there. I want to get us over the hurdle. Unfortunately, Pat Donahue left, but I was going to use a quote that he used. He said, "I don't want Littleton to be good. I want Littleton to be great." So I asked city council, you want to be good or you want to be great? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Councilman Renicki.
My prop. We have some props here. I'm leaning towards 50, the 50 cents, but if the point, if the 75 cent passes, I'll be fine with that. Very good and passion speech. To paraphrase John Austin Miller, who used to serve on the planning commission for 20 years and became a city council member, Littleton cannot not pass this. Just about everyone complains about too much taxes. It's the American way. It's, it's our right and responsibility. I've never heard a citizen, though, of Littleton, including me, complain about too much amenities or too much service. So if we want it, we have to pay for it. For a long time, Littleton has been skating on, on infrastructure built in the last 60 years. Now it's time to, to pay the piper because infrastructure, as we all know, wears out over time. So the tax increase, well, here we go. I'll use my props. This is a $100 bill. And this is a measly 50 cents. That's what minimally we're asking for.
You're keeping your props awfully close to yourself.
I don't trust Pat.
You need $3 and 50 cents, not $100. It's not just 50 cents, it's $3.
Well, it's our, it's our asking for the increase.
I should say $3.75.
So any rate, again, I'm in favor of the, I'm leaning towards 50%, but I'm not sure what button I'm going to press here in a few minutes.
Thank you. Mayor Protam.
All right, my turn. I feel really proud of our community tonight and I want to say a sincere thank you to everyone who showed up for public comment tonight. I really, really appreciate the knowledgeable, sophisticated, civil public comment. I wish that we got that much engagement with every issue that came before this council. And I really want to thank city leadership, Mark Ralph in particular, has had the political credibility, has had the leadership capacity and has had the vision to put this issue consistently in front of the council and the community. And that's not an easy thing to do when we're talking about a sales tax increase. I want to make a slightly different point than the points I heard during, during public In the time that I've been on council, the dominant recurring theme that I have heard over and over and over again goes something like this. We haven't passed a sales tax increase in 50 years. We haven't updated our code in a generation. We didn't do our comprehensive plan for an eternity. We don't have a water resources master plan, even though every other front-range community has had one for 50 years. My favorite will always be, we didn't know how much sewer we had, so we had to spend $1 million scoping it and what do you know, we found two miles of sewer. I think that the legacy of this council will be that we did core government and we got it done. We took on a lot of hard topics that past councils, for whatever reason, did not take on. We talked about ADUs. We talked about short-term rentals. We talked about expanding the downtown historic district. We did the code update and on and on and on. And the result is that our community may very well be poised to wake up to a bright new day of truly world-class government services. A moment is coming when we don't have to hassle with how much sewer we have, when, if circumstances allow, we can pivot and we can find ways to make this community absolutely All we need is to continue politically disciplined decision-making and we need the money to fund it. And I say this from a deeply personal perspective because in addition to Littleton being my hometown, it's the community that has to work so that my children can grow up the way I want them to grow up. And so I am not for solving a crisis because we need to start doing better than being reactive to crises. I am for a bright future in Littleton. .75 gets us the resources that we need to start doing creative, playful, state-of-the-art, thoughtful things in our community on a scale that we haven't imagined up to now. And so I am absolutely, without reservation, in favor of the .75% increase. And, and the reason in a nutshell is because I just want to see our community be an amazing, amazing place to live going forward and we are on the verge of it. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Scott. Can you tell which of us up here is the attorney and who is not? Well spoken. I think I'm the last here, I guess. Yeah, so I, you know, where I'm at on this, and Scott, I appreciate everything you said and everybody, the audience was incredible. And Patrick, I think you said it, we, we need to build to be better at this point. And I think many of our citizens said that. I think that the .75, as I recall the surveys, have, are still receiving favorable responses as well as the .5. So I think at this point, I, you know, I really want to do more than just try to catch up. I want to catch up and get ahead. So I'm, I'm supporting the, as I have been pretty much all along, the .75. And with that, counsel, do we have any more, any more discussion? And I was hoping that we were going to have one that was easier to go with, but I think we're just going to take them in order here. So I'm going to go with ordinance number, ordinance 21-2021, an ordinance on second reading, submitting to the registered electors of the city of Littleton, Colorado, a ballot issue regarding three-quarter percent use, I'm sorry, use tax, sales and use tax to fund the cost of capital improvements. Counsel?
Second.
Well, I'm looking for a motion. That wasn't the motion.
It sounded like a motion.
It did. Would you like to make the motion?
I'll go ahead and make the motion. I move to approve ordinance 2021 on second reading and submitting to the registered electors of the city of Littleton, Colorado, ballot issue regarding a three-quarter cent sales and use tax increase to fund the cost of capital improvement projects.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and second from Mayor Protam. And I want to make sure we know, knew what everybody has, and this is for the three-quarter. So councils, is there any more discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to put it to a vote here. Ready to vote? Let me know when you see something. Is it up there? Is it up there?
What we're talking about.
All right, cool. If you will, please make your vote. I think I voted, I may have voted twice there.
I don't know. I'm pushing that.
Looks like, looks like we're looking for council member Milliman. Okay, we have, all the votes are in. I'm going to close it. Thank you.
The vote is five in favor with council members Milliman and Fay voting no. The motion carries.
Okay. If you go ahead and hold your excitement. So we do have one more item that we have to consider and that is our other ordinance that.
Nope, nope, nope.
Our, our vote is 5-2. What's up? No, no, no. What's up? Did you want it? Are you speaking for her or you want to speak for yourself? Okay, well, you keep speaking, but I want to hear from her. Okay. If you would like to change your vote, yes.
Then I'll change my vote too.
Oh, okay. I'm going to reopen. Let me see if I can do a reopen.
The power of a quarter.
Okay, so everybody has a chance to vote? Ready? Is it, is it back up, Scott?
What are we voting on now?
We are voting on the motion.
Same one.
Same one. We, we had some errors in there. Okay. Is everybody voted? Everybody has voted? I'm going to close it again, Kelly.
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
All right, that is our final vote on that. And we do have the, the second ordinance, counsel, and that is ordinance 20-2021, that's the half-cent, is, is there a motion? Receiving no motion, the motion, the ordinance dies. So with that, city manager, you have direction?
Yes, I do. Congratulations, counsel, to our community, quite honestly. Getting this on the ballot, it's the first giant step, so thank you.
All right, thank you. With that, it is 6:26. We have no further business. We are adjourned.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.